Hello, Board President Grace Mollson. It looks like everyone is here.
Okay, so is Wes here or not yet? Because you said he was going to be late. So it's just the four of us?
My understanding is Wes is not here at this time. He may be joining us soon.
But we have a quorum. That's good. So there was nothing to report out with. So we're going to call open session to order and we will start with the flag salute.
Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I was ahead of myself, so no action was taken in closed session. And Superintendent, would you like to go over the teleconference protocol?
I will. And Mrs. Bach, I'm going to say a few words about the protocol before we bring it up on the screen. First of all, for our audience that is joining us tonight, thank you for being a part of our board meeting. This is again a new way for us in this environment that we're in with the pandemic to continue moving forward in public education in the community of Galt for our school district. I wanted to remind everyone that is joining us tonight, if you would please make sure that your device is muted, whether it's on a phone or computer, please know that the session is being recorded and that we do have a chat box feature, but I want to clarify that it is for public comment only when a prompt is given. And I want to share this because what's really one of the good things in this challenging time is that we have had more interest and participation in our board meetings than we have had in the past. So I wanted to clarify a few things that Kway Bach and I took part in with California School Boards Association. Just to clarify, that a board meeting is a meeting of the board in public to conduct agency business. It is not a meeting of the public. It is not a town hall meeting and it's not a press conference. So I wanted to start with that clarification because of just how much interest there is right now in reopening schools and all of those kinds of things. But again, this is a board meeting that is a meeting of the board in public, not a town hall meeting. And that what we did tonight for the agenda is that our reopening schools report is going to follow the action items. And we also may have a special guest that is joining us when we get to the report, Dr. Olivia Cassiri, who is a Sacramento County Public Health Officer. If her schedule allows, maybe joining us when we get to the report section. I want to clarify also that public comment pertaining to reopening schools will take place after the after the report that we do, and I'll review that again. So Kway, if you could please share the protocol that we have been using for our board meetings, please? And I will, I will go ahead and I will review it if it's okay that it's not on our screen right now. But what what we're going to do is we're going to be moving soon into our action items when our board president, when we get to that, to get to that spot. But what I'd like to share is that for, for public, for public comment, if you want to make public comment and you're part of the teleconference, what we're going to ask in just a few minutes, that if it's pertaining to an action item, not the report item on school reopening, then we're going to ask that you're going to type your name and the agenda item, such as an example of an action item is, for example, the board will consider action on the budget tonight. So you may want to comment on the budget. So for example, I would type in Karen Shower, topic budget, and that would tell us that you want to make public comment on the budget. And we then will ask that people that would like to make public comment on any action item that have joined us by phone, that they would unmute their phone and let us know who they are. And then we will take care of that related to action items. We're not going to ask about public comment to reopening schools yet. We'll wait till we finish that report. The last way that we have received feedback or public comment during board meetings is through email. And we have not received any emails by yesterday at 12 o'clock PM. We have no public comment by email for this board meeting. So again, Kway, if you could go ahead and, and you know, one other thing to share is that when our board takes action on action items, they are going to, they are going to take a roll call vote so that you will know how our board members individually voted. And then also if a board member loses connectivity during the board meeting and we still have a quorum, what we would do is we would wait for five minutes before reconvening and certainly we'll work with our board president on what she decides on that. But that just is part of our protocol. So Kway, if you could go ahead and move away from this. And we'll go ahead and start with any community member that's joining us tonight by teleconference. If you would like to make public comment about an action item, not the report on schools reopening, but on an action item, if you could please type in the chat box now your name and agenda item. Do not type in questions, just type in if your name and agenda item. Give you a couple, wait about a minute and see if we have anybody. Kway, do we have any when seeking to make public comment on an action item?
Dr. Shara, we do not have any request to make comment on an action item.
Okay, I'm now going to, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Bach. I'm now going to move to members of our community that have joined us tonight that would like to make public comment by phone related to an action item. If you would like to do so, if we could ask that you would unmute your phone, please state your name and the topic and just if we can just be patient in case more than one person speaks up at a time. Anybody by phone, please share your name and the topic of the action item. Okay, all right. So Board President Mollson, I'm going to turn this back to you. I think that we're set and I know that Mrs. Bach will let us know if some things change as we get going. And then again, once we get through, once we get to the report, we'll come back to this to see if we will have public comment after the reports on school reopening.
Thank you. So our first routine matter in new business is the consent calendar. And I noticed that we have some retirements that I'm not sure if you want to recognize.
Yes, thank you so much. And then Board President Mollson, would you like me also to go to donations after that? Yeah. Okay. All right. So I would like to announce that Mrs. Marie Williams has worked in our school district for 25 years. And she is noted in the consent calendar as retiring. Her effective date of retirement is at the end of August. And again, a very wonderful employee of 25 years in our school district who is retiring. And Board President Mollson, should I go ahead and move on to donations? Okay, all right. I would like to recognize a donation and then I'd also like Mrs. Donna Whitlock to help further clarify this very unique donation. We received a donation from Jacqueline and Jordan Perea, who donated 120 face shields to this speech program at Greer Elementary. I want to state that we certainly are working on personal protective equipment that we are ordering for employees in our district, but this was a very special donation. Ms. Whitlock, if you would further give the board some information about that donation, please?
Well, the update that I heard from one of our speech therapists, Danielle Anderson, is that the number of face shields that they are donating is now up to 390. And that will be donated to all of our speech therapists in our district. And on Monday at 10:30, they will be delivering the face shields to Greer Elementary School. And our speech therapist will be there to thank them personally. We're just very grateful that these two students took it upon themselves to, to.
Thank you. So board members, if there is no discussion on the consent calendar, is there any discussion? And do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Kway?
Thank you, board members. John Gordon made a motion to approve the consent calendar. Matthew Felix seconded it. Grace Mollson?
I.
Tom, Thomas Silva?
I.
The motion passes 4-0.
Next item is item 192.096, Board Consideration of Approval of COVID-19 Operations Report.
Okay, I'll start us out on this. Usually at this time of the year, we would be bringing to the board our local control accountability plan with the 2020-21 budget for approval. But due to executive order N5620, they have extended the deadline for the adoption of the LCAP. That will be at the end of December. And instead, what we have for you tonight is a COVID-19 operations written report that's been added to the Agenda for Board Action. Throughout school closure, we have been bringing monthly updates in all five areas of this written report. So really, it's a summary of what we've been, you know, bringing and communicating with you about for the last months. The area is just really quickly, and I'll just highlight a few, a few of the sections. The first section is the program offering. It's an overview explaining the changes and just some of the, the highlights that began on day one of school closure were the immediate deployment of Chromebooks and hotspots. Our teachers began immediately on day one, planning for distance learning. We prepared for the next week, we had distance learning packets throughout for those students who were unable to connect online. We were supported by our instructional assistants online. All of our specialists, our music PE exploratory teachers all also provided support to students. And at the end of the year, 1,200 parents, 800 students, and 310 staff members participated in giving us feedback on the distance learning experience. The second area were the steps that we took to meet the needs of our high need students, our English learners, our foster youth, and our low income students. And I highlight just a couple of areas in our, to meet their needs was communication was by far the priority during school closure. We had by legal community outreach assessments, office staff, social workers and counselors, communicating with families, making sure we got in touch with families in a variety of manners, manner, and social workers and counselors providing virtual opportunities, connect with learners during this hard time. Access to extended learning through Aces and BFLC clubs were offered to students. And I'll turn it over really quickly, a couple of the modes, we really quickly found out you know, of, of, of the communication, not just by phone, but by class apps. We used a Zoom. We had our superintendent sent messages out on a weekly basis to parents, phone calls. So that was a great effort. The third area was steps that we took to continue to deliver high quality distance learning opportunities. And just really quickly, the highlight here are the distance learning guidance that was provided to staff for the first three weeks of distance learning. And then distance learning tutorial documents created with a stronger instructional plan. And teachers were given a week to, to kind of learn some new learning tools and to do some tutorials. The district carefully monitored the participation of the students. And in the first two weeks, we had 55 students who needed distance learning packets. By the end of phase two, we mailed home 220 packets to students. The fourth area was providing school meals. And we know that we provided school meals at all of our sites to children regardless if they qualified for free and reduced lunch or not. But what I thought was just tremendous is March through May, we provided 150,000 meals to our families in Galt. That's just an incredible number when, when I added it up. The last part were steps taken by our district supervisor supervision of students. And we talked about a little bit about this last time that we met. We know that Galt is in the southernmost portion of the county and offers limited local childcare opportunities. But we did provide opportunities during the school day to connect with students, to make sure they were safe. Again, Aces provided virtual check-ins. Our school counselors, social workers provided check-ins. Teachers and instructional assistant held virtual daily class meetings. They followed up with students that they hadn't heard from. And on our website, we provided information on Sacramento area childcare resources so that families who did, were employed in Sacramento, were essential employees, did have that information. So this, well, with your approval tonight, this will go on our website. It will be translated in Spanish. And then also upon approval, we will submit this to the county office of education along with the budget proposal that will come to you tonight. Do you have any questions?
I do. Number one, this is fantastic. This is great information. And the numbers of lunches we provided is just astounding. Are we still providing on Mondays throughout the summer?
Lois, are we still providing the meals on Mondays?
We are, yes, at two of our sites. So our families can, yes, our, our families can go to either site. But yes, we are every Monday still providing the, the meals.
Well, thank you for that. Yeah, I had heard, I knew about during the school year, but then I didn't really hear much for the summer. And normally we do, so just want to make sure that we're still doing it. Fantastic. Do any board members have any questions, comments? No? Okay, so if there's no further discussion, do I have a motion to approve 192.096?
Move to approve item 192.096.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so you have Matthew and Tom.
Thank you. Board members, I have a motion from Matthew Felix, a second from Thomas Silva. Grace Mollson? Hi. John Gordon?
Hi.
And Wesley Kegels now with us. Wes?
Wes.
I'm sorry, Wes, did you say I? Okay, great.
Sounds up.
Okay, great. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, next is 192.097, Board Consideration of Approval of the 2021 Budget.
All right. Good evening. Tonight, we are bringing to you as an action item to approve our 2021 adopted budget. This is the same budget that we reviewed with you last Wednesday in our public hearing. And now it's opportunity for the, the board to adopt this budget for the 2021 school year. We can go to the next slide there, just a few slides with you, just a quick summary on a few items and some budget assumptions that are in this adopted budget. We can go to the first, second slide there, Kway, thank you. This, of course, this adopted budget is based on the May revise and the numbers and what we knew at that time. State and local revenue has been reduced by about $4 million based on the projections in the May revise. But federal revenue has increased by $1 million due to the 110 CARES federal funds that we have received. And that is already in the, the budget. Our enrollment is projected to be flat for next year and for the next few years out at 3,545 students. That is a decrease of 62 students from the 1819 school year. So it looks like based on the budget right now, we will be funded at 3,545 students for the 2021 school year. Pension cost for employers have decreased for 2021 and 2122. That is because the state is going to contribute more to pension cost, which will save LEAs money in that area. Our unduplicated count is projected to slightly increase. This year, we were at 61.71% and we are expected to be at 63.23% for next school year, next fiscal year. That's our students receiving free and reduced lunches. Our foster youth students that make up our unduplicated count. We are anticipating state revenue deferrals for 2021. That has not changed. And we'll talk a little bit more about that based on the new budget deal that we're learning about. Reductions and reserve levels. Our projected reductions for 2021 is an additional 500,000. I say additional because we have already reduced approximately 600,000. And that's already in this budget for the 2021 school year. But we still are reducing the need, we still, due to cash flow and due to deferrals, state deferrals, due to deficit spending, we still need to reduce 500,000 for 2021. 2122 is almost $3 million in reductions. 2223 is almost a million. Those are pretty far out. It will just depend on the state revenue and how long we stay in this recession, what reductions will look like in the next few years. It will just really determine how we get out of this pandemic that we're in and what the revenue the state has and how that will go the next couple of years. So those are definitely far out projections, but when we turn our budget into the county, we have to turn in the multi-year projection, which has to, has to show what reductions would need, need to be in place if we stay in the budget environment we currently are in. And those reductions are just to get us to the, the very minimum, state minimum of a 3% reserve. So you can see at 2021, we are just at that 3%, that is the bare minimum state requirement. 2122, 3.02% and the same for 2223. And that is with those reductions. So definitely a lot to think about if, if we don't get out of this recession. So there is a state budget deal in the works and so we are currently reading and going to, listening in on webinars on how this is being interpreted. Of course, it has not been signed yet. There still could be some changes. We're working on trailer bills and the budget bill to define these changes that, that may go into effect if the governor signs by June 30th. We're still looking at NOCOLA. No, that's no cost of living adjustment for this next fiscal year. This governor is wanting to fund LCFF fully funded at 1920 levels. But with that comes some IOUs. The, the governor and legislature, they both agree that education needs that funding. The the governor and legislature, they both agree that education needs that funding, but the funding is not there right now for them to give that to us. And so there's an increased level of state deferrals for 2021, more so than even what was in the May revise. May revise had projected deferrals to start in April of 2021. Now they're projected to start in February. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that when we when we get to the next agenda item as well, but we will be looking at issuing trans loans to make payroll and to pay our bills based on state deferrals. This budget is also very dependent on receiving, the state receiving additional federal funds, not the CARES funds, that the state already has that and that's already in the budget, but it's additional funds that the that have not yet been approved at the federal level. Some good news here, our district may be receiving approximately three million dollars in one-time federal funds based on the additional CARES funds that the governor has not allocated yet. It will be used for what is called the learning loss mitigation funding. We're watching trailer bill language and budget bill language on how we can use those funds and timelines to spend those funds as well. But it's it's very needed to open school up in August, especially under these conditions of social distancing. So very thankful that we should be receiving those funds. There is some additional special education funding that will flow through your SLPAs. It will not come straight to your district. It will go through the SLPA, but it should help us. There's a continued state investment in STIRS and PERS that we talked about. Something else in this budget is that LEAs or districts will not be able to lay off non-management certificated staff this summer. There has been a stop to that that law or that language. And also in this budget deal, classified staff in the food service department, transportation department and custodial would not be able to be laid off in 2021 if this budget goes. So next steps, we need to close the nineteen twenty financial books. We're actively working on that right now. We need to prepare for an August budget revision. Definitely will be a revision because this budget is significantly different than the May revise. And we will need to be, we will need to complete the learning continuity and attendance plan. This is a plan that the state will put out by August first in order for us to receive the federal funds that three million dollars I talked about. Districts will have until September thirtieth to submit this plan. So we're we'll wait to see how that what that what that plan entails and what we will need to do to submit and receive those funds. And then also, we will be collaborating with our county office for a TRAN pool with other districts. SCOE, our county office, the fiscal department, about a month ago, when we first started talking about county districts needing to take out trans, they said we are going to look into a TRAN pool with all of the districts to see if we can get a better rate because we are not in this alone. Most of the districts in our county will need to take out trans if these deferrals go through next year. So we'll start working with our county on that. So any questions about our our current budget or about what we might be hearing out there with this new budget?
John?
I'm just, I'm just really curious, you know, what the feds, feds are going to come up with. I know that there are some things that that they're floating around, so it's. And I guess, you know, this state is more or less what the state, I guess it's going to get more clear for you and other school districts here in the weeks to come. My. This very good job. Just a lot to digest, especially since these bills have recently come out and the deal was recently struck. So that's a lot of work and some numbers to go through, so thank you for that.
I know a lot of work has gone into this and it's much appreciated, as tough as it is in these times. Are there any other comments or questions, concerns from the board? Well, I see she shakes head. So if there's no other comments or questions, then do I have a motion to approve?
You know, Grace, Grace, I've got, I do have one question. So it's.
That's fine.
Some of, some of these one-time funds. I mean, is that going in terms of the social distancing and trying to keep schools as clean as possible? So with this one-time funds would help support in terms of human resources and getting positions, maybe temporarily, is that something that that the district has has planned out and that's what that money would be used for?
Definitely that, that what you just explained there, the requirements for social distancing, extra staff, extra supplies needed, all of that fits under the the use of these one-time funds to start school.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. So I guess when we get to a point of hiring, then we probably identify those positions in light of, you know, knowing how tight the budget is, we're talking about three percent and and if there is, when we get to the point of hiring of people, our general public, you know, question that we need to be really clear in terms of, well, you know, these are limited term positions and using, you know, one-time funds, so it's not confusing anyone. Thank you.
Yes, that is, that's a great point.
Thanks, John, good points. Okay, so if there's no other further questions or discussion, do I have a motion to approve the 2021 budget? Item number 192.097.
Move to approve.
John, do I have a second?
Second.
Matt?
Thank you, board members. I have a motion from John Gordon to approve seconded by Matthew Felix. Grace Molson.
Hi.
Wesley Kegel.
Hi.
Tom Silva.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Why, before we just go onto the next agenda item, I just wanted to to thank and and recognize our fiscal services staff supervisor and business staff that's just worked really hard to, under these difficult times, to to stay open to the level that we have to keep business going, keep the budget going, keep payroll, keep our staff paid, keep our bills paid. Just want to recognize everything that they've done to keep us afloat as well.
Yeah, I know it hasn't been easy, so all this hard work is very appreciated and it shows in that in your reports. Okay, so let's move on to item 192.098. Board consideration of approval of resolution twenty-one to establish temporary interfund transfers of special or restricted fund monies for fiscal year twenty, 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 twenty-one. Sorry.
Yes, so with the projection of state deferrals for next fiscal year, one of the things a district can do is, or the school board can adopt a resolution to allow the superintendent or designee to interfund borrow. And we have two accounts that we could potentially interfund borrow. That is our capital facilities fund and our building fund. That is our our bond, our bond funds, measure K funds, and that's also our developer fee funds. We don't have a whole lot. Our measure K funds will be exhausted with the River Oaks project, but we are anticipating this fall receiving two point one million from the state and facility hardship funds from O'Raingo Ranch that we could potentially borrow from. We also have two point two million dollars in developer fees. Well, if you add those up, it's 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 less than what we've had to take trans out for in the past, back in the recession. And we did take larger trans out in the in the tune of five to six million dollars to cover payroll. But we wanted to get this resolution in place just so we had it in case the the hardship funds come in, maybe the the deferrals aren't as as deep as we are anticipating. But it's in place, so if we needed to borrow from that to help us, we could. And we would bring to the board immediately following the next board meeting what we borrowed from, how much we borrowed. You do, there's in the resolution, it stipulates how and when you need to pay it back, you have to basically pay it back in that fiscal year unless you borrow it a hundred and twenty days to the end of that fiscal year. So it is definitely, it is just a loan from borrowing from another account.
Lois, are there any penalties from moving and transferring?
No, as long as you return the funds back to the account you borrowed from within the timeline and and ed code, no, there's no penalty or there's no cost.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion or questions from the board? No?
No, she already answered my question.
All right, so if there's no further discussion or questions, do I have a motion to approve 192.098, board consideration of approval of resolution twenty-one?
All move to approve.
Thanks, Tom, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, board members. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve seconded by Wesley Kegel. Grace Molson.
Hi.
John Gordon.
Hi.
Matthew Felix.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. So next is item 192.099, board consideration of approval of Galt Schools Transportation Agreement.
Okay, well, we have made some changes to our Galt Schools Transportation Agreement. I have worked with Dr. Shower, Bill Spalding and Corey Reel from the high school district to come up with an agreement that would get us through this next fiscal year with Transportation Department. There hasn't been a whole lot of changes with between the existing contract or existing agreement that we have for transportation. I will highlight some of those changes and they are in red with the in the agreement that you have in your packet. What, something that we added to the language was that the Galt High School District will pay twenty-five percent of the clerk-to-salary for transportation-related support. We have already been, this has been in place for a couple of years, it just hasn't been in the agreement. And so we just wanted to make sure moving forward, we get that in the agreement. Transportation Supervisor will be responsible for completing all personnel evaluations for both high school employees and elementary employees. And we have that more outlined and more specifically written into this agreement this time. And the Transportation Supervisor would get input from a Galt High administrative designee to complete the evaluations for high school employees, but our our supervisor, Carrie Gardner, would be the main one responsible for completing these evaluations for all transportation employees regardless of what district you're employed under. We also have adjusted, this came up, you might remember this came up in the transportation study. We have adjusted that we would be billing either district based on our transportation mileage report. That is a ridership report that we update every September. And based on that ridership report, the high school district is at sixty-two percent of cost and the elementary district is at thirty-eight percent. And so what we are going to do moving forward, beginning July first, pending board approval from both school boards, high school and elementary, we would be billing transportation employees and services at a sixty percent rate for high school and forty percent rate for elementary. That is a change. As you remember, as you probably remember, we've been at fifty fifty and that was brought up in the study that we really needed to follow the agreement and look at our ridership for mileage on how we should be billing each district. And so we do want to make that change beginning July first. It'll be updated in September. It could change or we will have a new ridership report in September, so we will see, but we do need to make that change. And we also added, the high school district has always paid us a flat rate for utilities that it has not been in the agreement and we actually reduced it by three thousand dollars. The last few years, they have been paying us eight thousand dollars and we looked at our overall cost of utilities and took into the consideration that we use that MOT, maintenance operations, transportation, not just transportation, those facilities. And so we thought five thousand dollar flat rate was fair. Job descriptions are attached for you for all employees, both high school and elementary, and the ridership report is attached as well for high school and elementary routes. And this will go to the high school board and I believe their meeting might be next week, this month, or they will be taking this to their board as well.
Are there any questions from the board?
So I had a question, I just, you know, I looked at the job descriptions and I probably overlooked it, but I noticed how the mechanics would report to the director of transportation. And I guess that's a, as I was looking at the other job descriptions, I guess that would be with the transportation supervisor?
It would be, it would be our transportation supervisor. Yes, that's probably something that I would see how old are, is that job description? Actually, maybe we don't even have a date on that one. But yes, no, it would be, I think that was the, maybe the high school. Description there. We have two mechanics, we have one that is a high school employee and one that is an elementary employee, but both would be under the direct supervision of our transportation supervisor.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I recall from the from the study, there, one thing that was kind of glaring was some of the overtime costs and making sure that we're kind of staying on top of that. And so I'm assuming a lot of these things that are changing took into account the report that was, that we talked about a few months back, so thank you for that.
Yes, we have, we have made some of those changes as well.
Are there any other discussion or questions from the board? If not, do I have a motion to approve? 192.099.
Move to approve.
Thanks, John, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, was that Matthew that seconded that?
Yes, Quay.
Thank you, Matthew. So I have a motion from John Gordon, second from Matthew Felix. Grace Molson.
Hi.
Tom Silva.
Hi.
Wesley Kegel.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Yeah. Okay, so next we have 192.100, board consideration of approval of resolution sixteen to reduce or eliminate classified staff due to lack of works, lack of work, lack of funds.
Okay, I'm bringing to you tonight the proposal to reduce three additional classified positions. These are three special education instructional assistant positions. They are currently vacant and due to student need, they, we, we do not see a need to fill these for next year. It's one, three point nine two instructional assistant and two, six-hour positions. The projected savings to the district would be seventy-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-five. Board approval is recommended. I would like to possibly just add that the vacancies were due to three, one resignation and two retirement. were due to three, one resignation and two retirements. So other employees were able to move into those positions so that we didn't need to lay off any of our staff. Do you have any questions?
I have a couple. Number one is, are these based on enrollment? So like, if there is an increase enrollment of special ed students, we can see these positions filled if there's any? Correct?
Yes, correct. Thank you, Wes. This is based on student need, IEPs, for student needs for one-on-ones, and also for our class sizes for our special education, special day classes, and the ratios that we need to maintain for teachers and students. So as, as the need arises or as our student population arises, we will be bringing these back.
And then my second question is, in the budget we just approved, Lois was saying about getting a possible $3 million in one-time funds, and that would like, supposed to be offsetting employment? So are these, are these some of the positions, well, this is based on attendance? But I guess I should ask back then, like, what positions, like janitorial and stuff like that obviously will be filled, but other positions such as these that will, will still need to be filled with that money?
Lois, did you want to address the possible temporary positions that we could be bringing?
Sure, we could. Right now, it looks like the language for spending that $3 million would be to support student learning. And so I think we would be able to use these, the $3 million to, for special education instructional assistance or regular ed instructional assistance. Student safety is also noted in the language right now, so for custodians, yard duties, staff, we need to supervise students as well. We should be able to use these one-time funds.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, and thanks for those questions, Wes. Any other questions or discussions from the board? No? If not, then do I have a motion to approve 192.100, Board Consideration of Approval of Resolution Number 16? I'll make a motion to approve 192.100. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Who's that?
Wes.
Wes, I think you asked.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Molson, seconded by Wesley Kegel. John Gordon?
Hi.
Tom Silva?
Hi.
Matthew Felix?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you. So next is 192.101, Board Consideration of Approval of the 2021 Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educated.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. The Declaration of Need is something that we bring to you every year. And this document, if approved by you this evening, would allow us to continue to work with interns when fully qualified candidates, suitable candidates are not available. So again, it's something that we bring to you every single year, and tonight we are asking for approval so that it would allow us to continue to work with interns.
Thank you. Yes, this is an annual thing that we approve. So are there any questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve 192.101?
I'll make the motion. Sorry. I'll make the approval, item 192.101.
Thanks, Matthew. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. I have a motion from Matthew Felix, seconded by John Gordon. Grace Molson?
Hi.
Tom Silva?
Hi.
Wesley Kegel?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you. So next is Agenda Item 192.102, Board Consideration of Approval of P A R 3413.3 Tobacco-Free Schools.
Okay, we brought to you in May the first reading for the proposed revisions for the current tobacco-free schools board policy. And just a review is that in order to apply for any of the Tobacco Use Prevention Education Funds, which is TUPA, the district needs to adopt a tobacco-free school policy. And we needed to update ours since it hadn't been updated since 2008. And recommending approval tonight. Just a reminder is that Jennifer Collier, our Extended Learning Supervisor, has been taking the lead on working and applying and working with our county office for, for TUPA grants. And she's currently working on a small grant. And for this first one, we really are hoping that it'll support the McCaffrey Middle School Wellness Center, and the focus is going to be on vaping and the dangers and the health risks associated with vaping. Our families in one of our fall surveys, that was one that was pointed out as a great concern for both staff and parents. So with this policy, with this new board policy being updated, it will put us closer to being able to apply for those TUPA funds. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? No, I like how the focus is going to be on the middle school students because in my line of work, it's been noted that the majority start, you know, those that do vape start either in the middle school or very early freshman-ish high school. So it's good to, you know, get this stuff in early and educate our students.
It will be, it's extremely important that we add this to our, to our curriculum.
It is. Thank you for all the hard work, and thank you, Jennifer, if you're listening in Zoom land. Thank you for comments. I have a motion to approve 192.102?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wes Kegel, seconded by Matthew Felix. Grace Molson?
Hi.
John Gordon?
Hi.
Tom Silva?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you. Okay, last motion before report, or last action item, sorry. 192.103, Board Consideration of Approval and Amendment of Understanding Between the California School Employee Association and its Galt Chapter Number 362 and the Galt Joint Unit Elementary School District Regarding the District's Proposed Layoffs and Reductions of the 2019-2020.
Thank you. Some background about this action item is that, again, what our school has done as our board has made some very hard but important decisions to address the budget challenges that we're having. And that meant over $1 million in reductions that I have now made as of tonight. And what happened at an earlier board meeting is that we had the reduction of our warehouse worker position, the number of hours, along with a technology position that was reduced. And because of the reduction of district office positions, we needed to bargain the effects of that, which we did, thankfully, with, very swiftly with our classified union. And what is in MOU are some things related to, for example, not the, what we need to be considering when it comes to the transfer of work and the types of things that happen when, again, we've got to redistribute work and how to do that in agreed-upon ways. So board recommendation is, board approval is recommended on this, and there is not fiscal impact in MOU other than this is a result of the reductions that took place with those two district office positions.
Thank you. Any questions? Or discussion from the board clarification? You're also quiet tonight. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, do I have a motion to approve 192.103?
Move to approve.
Thanks, John. Do I have a second? I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion from John Gordon to approve, seconded by Grace Molson. Tom Silva?
Hi.
Wesley Kegel?
Hi.
Matthew Felix?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is Reports, Schools Reopening Update.
Very good. Thank you so much. We will, we will go through the report, and then Board President Molson, I will turn it back to you in terms of our process for public comment that will follow the report, that will involve our directors. Along with, again, I'm very, very grateful and pleased to announce that Dr. Olivia Casiri is joining us tonight. She is the Sacramento County Public Health Officer, and, you know, she will be available to provide some background for us on, on, you know, the conditions and things to think about, and there can be some time for our board members for, to, you know, again, take advantage of this opportunity to get further clarification on this. So I would like our Assistant Mrs. Bach, if you would please pull up the outline so that I can review that, and then once I'm done, we'll go ahead and go back to our, this current screen, please. Thank you. All right, so here is the report. First of all, I will provide an overview of a few areas, and then I will turn this to our Director of Educational Services, Donna Whitlock, to update the board about what we are learning from parents who are coming through with expressing their preferences for programs for us to offer as we reopen schools. I will then have our, our guest, Dr. Olivia Casiri, will be up next to provide us with an update. And if there are, if there's some clarification that our board would like to have, this could be some time to do that. Dr. Casiri will be followed by our Director of Curriculum, Claudia Del Toro Anguiano, who will review a planning matrix that shows our board the elements of what we're looking at, how we're working with others to reopen safely and with quality the best that we can. And then I'll finish up with some next steps and look to the board for some direction as we continue to move forward. So Quai, we can go ahead and move away from this agenda. And just a brief overview is this, I think I'm going to say with a capital T, tremendous teamwork, tremendous teamwork within this district across this community to continue to move forward to reopen our schools safely and as efficiently as possible. We have had ongoing weekly conversations with our high school district. We had a meeting with the City of Galt concerning after-school SOAR program services today. We have had meetings with our unions and will do so again tomorrow. Just, we are making progress. We are making progress, and that includes something new. We have added an FAQ section to our website because there are things that happen every week that is, that needs to be communicated, and we plan to provide another update on that on Friday. So again, one of the critical areas that we accomplished was a survey, an initial survey that gave us feedback from parents, from staff, from our students in terms of distance learning and, and areas to think about for reopening. And with that, Donna Whitlock, you worked with staff and launched a survey, and we have some information to share with you now.
We do. I wanted to start by, by just giving a little background at the, as I, in the COVID operational report, I mentioned the distance learning survey that we did in the district for staff and for parents and students at the end of the year. And in that survey, 60% of our families asked about educational preferences. Their preference was for full-time on-campus learning. 40% of our parents were in favor of some type of a blended part-time distance learning program or homeschool program. So that prompted us to look at options and what we could offer for the next school year. I do want to note that when we sent out the parents, the parent survey, the three options, I do want to clarify that they are general descriptions, that these, that the descriptions did not include specifics on scheduling, subjects, for example, breaks and lunches, because we're still continuing to work with, with all of our staff on working out details, but our principals have just put a lot of effort into looking at the first two options. So this is just a survey summary. Last Friday, we launched this survey on, on program preferences. By Sunday, we already had 100 families respond, and then by today, we were almost at 1,000 families who responded to the survey. Quai, if you go on to the next page. So here's just, it's going to be just a brief overview of the preferred program options. 75% or 700% of learners, they, they prefer for their children full-time, daily, on-campus learning. Note that in each of these, the numbers are going up, but the percentages are still saying about the same. So the percentages are pretty stable. It's just we have more and more families answering the survey, which I believe will go until Friday. 107 learners or 11% said that they preferred part-time, daily, on-campus instruction, for example, two and a half hours, and then at-home distance learning in the afternoon or in the morning, depending on their schedule. And then we had quite a few families that said that they would prefer a homeschool program at this time. And I'm going to go into the comments to give you a glimpse of, you know, some of their, their feedback and their reasoning. But that's, that's the breakdown. And that is, it was pretty close to what they were, that what parents were indicating in the spring. So move to the next page. So what I'm going to do is that we had, oh my goodness, and I didn't write it down. I think we had like about 180 comments. And so I took the comments and I put them into themes. So you're going to see some themes, and then what I did was I took comments that were general and were indicative of, you know, the majority of the comments. So these are just, these are just some samples. Every all-day option, 96 comments on that one. And it really centered around, they want their children at school as much as possible. The reasoning was, you can see full-time education is just studying, social interaction is important. Parents are seeing a decline in their child's education, you know, being at, you know, home with the distance learning. And she wants it to go back to normal and kids need to play and socialize. Another parent noted that children need structure and class learning gives them that structure. And another parent just said it's extremely important for their family on social help. Please bring back full-time, five-day-a-week school for our kids. Sixteen comments on part-day. Every option with that, with the part-day every day, would also include the distance learning. And they said that they'd like all of their kids to be part-
I'm going to stop you for a second and I'm going to keep going. There, there's a bit of a challenge with your-
Thank you.
And, and it might work, you know, I may have you come back in here. But again, I'll, I'll just keep going here. This, again, what, what Donna Whitlock has done here is looked through, you know, over, she said 180 comments and just broke it into areas to give our board, to give you a sense right now for things that, you know, are coming up. And she started getting into our, our part-day, everyday option. You can see there were 16 comments around that. And then when we look at the homeschool option, you'll notice that we have 13 comments around that and that there are families that, families that are expressing that they, they do see the need for home study program because they don't feel comfortable having your child attend school in person right now with, with the COVID-19 situation until that improves. And then I know Dr. Casiri will be joining us next here. But this is an example of where, you know, we have a spectrum here. Here's an example of, of a comment saying, if my, if my children are required to wear a mask, I will opt to homeschool. So, you know, it's one reason again, thing that we're offering, just to give parents some choices here if there's enough interest. There is another area related to preferring the least amount of restrictions. And, you know, there are people that are questioning, you know, that, that don't want to see children using face masks, that want school to be normal as it was in February. They don't want to see Plexiglas or masks. They just, they would like to see stricter restrictions of just sick kids not being at school. And then the last area under health and safety priority, there are 33 comments. But again, here you see a different spin on it where families are saying, you know what? I, I want my child there every day, but only if there's social distancing. So you can see that we have parents that have, are expressing different concerns and needs. Is there another slide that follows this?
There's one more. Yeah, there's one additional.
Yeah, yeah. Let me go on to this and then we'll, we'll wrap this up. And again, I want to get this over to Dr. Casiri here. Is that you'll see again, and I announced earlier, there are comments related to after-school. You know, one of the reasons we are looking at a five-day program is that we know that we've got feedback where families are saying, I can't go to work unless my child can be at school. We're trying to find safe ways to do that. But then again, to be able to do that, our teachers need planning time. And we need time to get our schools cleaned up for the next day, sanitized, everything. And so, you know, what can we do for families that maybe are working past 1:00 or 1:30? And so we're looking to, you know, make after-school programs happen safely. There are concerns also about transportation and, you know, what it would take to make that happen safely. We did surface in the survey that we think it's going to be difficult to provide transportation for as many children as we have because of the requirements. That might be something a Dr. Casiri, you know, may, may talk a bit more. And then there's some additional comments related to a child with an IEP, knowing how that will be supported with what we're trying to do and, and other comments. Donna, is there another slide after this or anything else that you'd like to add?
If you, if you can hear me, I just wanted to mention to everyone, to our board and to our participants is that we are now working on a, an alternative registration form for the part-time distance learning program and the home study, the homeschool program. We're working on a registration form that we hope to be able to launch to parents in mid-July. Were you able to, did you get that, Karen?
Yes, we did. Perfect. So Qui, let's go ahead and, and move away from this. And Board President Molson, I, I'm not sure if you would like to go to Dr. Casiri now or, and come back to this after she presents later, or if you, if the board would like to talk about what Mrs. Whitlock has shared with us.
I'm open to either. Board members, do you have a preference? Do you want to discuss this? Or do you want to hear what Dr. Casiri has to say? And then go into a discussion?
My preference would be to hear from Dr. Casiri if possible. She's made her time available tonight and she may have other things to do when she's done.
I, I agree, Matthew. I'd like to hear what she has to say too. So is that okay there, one? We'll have her speak and then we'll discuss. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Casiri, for being here tonight on Zoom for us.
So good evening, everyone, and thank you again for having me. I'm hoping that you can hear me well. Okay, good. So, and I want to spend as much time as possible answering your questions, but just wanted to very quickly remind you of the journey that we've been on. And this started all the way in February. February 19th is when we got our first diagnosed case of COVID-19 in Sacramento. And over that month, there are a lot of things that happened. The first death, we had exposure in the school, the schools closed. And then, of course, we went through a period of time where we were seeing a lot of cases mainly in our long-term care facilities. So that's where we were putting a lot of focus. But because we were seeing the cases going up so quickly, the whole state moved to the, make the decision of issuing stay-at-home orders for entire counties, actually for the entire state. And that was unprecedented because as health officers, we are accustomed to issuing health officer orders, but usually to individuals. So to issue it for an entire county, that was very different. And so, of course, we were all trying to work together to figure out how this would work. But we knew that we needed to make that step because at the rate that we were going, the number of deaths that were occurring, we were very concerned that the hospitals would get overwhelmed and would get to the point where we would not be able to provide care for everybody else, everybody who got sick. And we know that the, the stay-at-home orders were effective because we saw a drop. And you've probably heard talk about a flattening of the curve. And that definitely did happen. So we got to the point where, at one point where we were getting 50 cases a day, it went down to just 10 a day. The deaths also went down and the hospitalizations went down. And so we got to the point where we were able to actually start looking at reopening because, of course, when you shut down businesses, it impacts the entire community. And we were getting those calls with people letting us know the difficulty that they were having with the bankruptcy, not being able to pay their rent. So all of this we've gone through is every single decision we've made, we've had to consider what the consequences were and try to balance that with what we were seeing with the numbers. So we did anticipate that there would be some increase in cases as we opened up, and that did happen at the beginning. And we focused a lot on what we call contact tracing and contact investigation. Probably these are terms that you're hearing for the, from the media also. And basically, what that means is that whenever we got a case reported to us, we'd contact that person, find out all the people who were exposed, make sure that those people are put in quarantine as well. And that's effective. And we call that containment because the more you are able to put people in quarantine, you're able to slow the spread of the disease. But in addition to that, as we were opening up, we also had to consider what else did we need to do because we knew that we still had COVID-19 in the community. And so you start hearing about things like social distancing, maintaining the six feet, the hand hygiene, making sure you wash your hands. And now, most recently, the state has passed a, an order for, or mandate for face covering. We did have a face covering order in, in Sacramento prior to that. But now the state has issued a statewide one. So those are basically the tools that we have that we try to use to contain and stop the spread of COVID-19. And as we look towards what's going to happen in the future as fall comes, being able to reopen the schools, I think being able to close the schools early really helped in shielding our children. Because right at the beginning, we did have some exposures and we had a lot of discussions about should we shut down the entire school? You can imagine how disruptive that would be if every time we got a call, a case, we'd have to close down the school and then reopen it 14 days afterwards. So the decision had been made that all the schools would close. But now we're coming to the fall. We know how important school is and how much the children do need that structure. But we want to be able to do it safely. So Public Health, we've been working with SCOE and we came up with a planning guide that was based on those principles of how do we reduce the risk as much as possible? How can we make it as safe as possible for our children? The main points that we, I want to remind you of as you're making these decisions. One is that social distancing is what we know as the most effective. And basically, that means having a six-feet distance between one person and another. Not very easy to achieve. We know that because in a school environment, it's supposed to be a place for socializing. And now we're having to try and look at things differently because we can't go back yet to the way things were in February because we still have COVID-19 in this community. So we have to look at how can we do it in as safe a way as possible? So the six-feet separation is one of the most important. And then there are other things that can be done, especially when six-feet is not possible. For example, when the children are passing one another in the hallway. And one of those is the, the face covering. But we do recognize that it's not easy for children, especially younger children, to wear face coverings and especially wearing it for the entire day. So if you look at the planning guide that, that we put together, SCOE and Public Health, it does acknowledge that and does acknowledge that probably for younger children, that you will not be able to achieve the face coverings. But there are other things that you need to make sure you do. And one of those is the hand hygiene, keeping the place very clean. And then also being able to do the checks. Ideally, if the schools are able, they would do the temperature checks when they, and the symptom checks as the children are coming into school. But we know that that's very difficult. It's very labor-intensive and probably not easy to achieve even for some of the smaller schools. But we feel that it's important to give the message to the parents that as school starts, this is something new that they're going to be more, have to be more vigilant about checking with their children, making sure that they don't have the symptoms of COVID-19 and that they don't have fever. Because if they do get to school with a fever and the teacher or the nurses recognize it, then that child would have to be sent home. And, and, and so these are basically the principles that you'll find in the document. And so the, now the schools and the school districts, as you're doing tonight, have to make the difficult decisions of how do we achieve this? We gave some examples of how that could be achieved. But of course, we know that there are challenges with every decision that you make. In some situations, you'll find that, you know, how, for example, the buses is one place where we've had a lot of questions come. How are we going to be able to make sure that the children are separated? And one thing that you could do, again, of course, is using the PPE and then also the Plexiglas or alternating the seats so that you put as much separation as possible. The others with the children that special needs. And so our advice is that because each child is unique and their needs are unique, that you would have to have that discussion with the parents. And if possible, with the healthcare provider as well to make decisions as to whether this is a safe enough environment for the child to be in or if those are children who would have to continue with their education and long distance. So a lot of decisions to make. And I, I know that one, one thing that's important is that we all want to do what's right for the children. And we all recognize how important school is. But I think we want to find a way of being able to do that safely. So I'm going to stop there and I know you probably have questions. So I'd like to spend the time being able to answer those questions.
Do we have any statistics in terms of age groups that have, that have been diagnosed with, with, with COVID-19?
Yes. And as I mentioned, when we first started with this whole outbreak, a lot, most of the cases that we were getting were in the people over the age of 65 and those were mainly in long-term care facilities. But we're noticing that that has changed, especially lately, where we are seeing more, I think about 50% of the cases that we get are between the age of 18 and 49. And then we are seeing more of the age group 0 to 17. I don't have that in front of me, but I can look, look it up and, and let you know. Give me a second here. So 0 to 17, we have 169 right now total. So, and most, many of those are actually diagnosed within the last couple of weeks. So we, we are seeing a change, definitely. We're also seeing a change in terms of, we're seeing more of families. And then especially also by area. Gault, for the longest time, was spared, but Gault is also seeing more numbers as well lately. So definitely, we do have some concern about the way that the disease is spreading right now. One question that we've been asked is, could it be that we're seeing these high numbers because we're doing more testing? And yes, we're doing more testing, but we also know that there is an indication that there's more spread because when you look at the percentage of positives, there was a time when it was about 1% and now it's gone up to 2.5% of the tests that we do are positive. So that definitely means that we're seeing more disease spread in the community.
So Dr. Casiri, this is Matthew Felix. I'm one of the members of the board. Thank you for joining us tonight. You are, for tonight, our subject matter expert regarding public health issues that are presented to our district relating to COVID-19. So we have in our state approximately 1,000 school districts and roughly 6.3 million students. And for the next, next school year, a school district such as ours will be reviewing the information issued by public health authorities at the state and county level. That information is presented to us in at least two forms. One, requirements, which are mandates. One, requirements, which are mandates, and two, recommendations, which are discretionary. So with that, my first question is, what do we know? Either through reliable studies or by at least medical consensus about the transmissibility or communicability of COVID-19, specifically in the K-28 student population for an on-campus or in-person classroom setting? Do we have anything we can look at to make a reasonable comparison for our purposes here in our district?
So those are all very good questions and one thing that you, you can see very clearly is that there's very, there are very few, relatively few positives that have been diagnosed within the entire age group zero to 17. And there are even fewer when you're looking at the elementary school age, elementary, yeah, elementary and middle school. From the studies, there's still a lot that we're learning, but we don't know. From what we're told from the studies, from the Centers for Disease Control, is that it seems that children tend to get mild disease. We're still trying to learn about how transmissible the disease is from a child to another child or a child to an adult. Part of that is because schools closed real early on in this pandemic because everyone was very concerned because usually, and of course, because we were still trying to figure out what was going to happen. We, we know that many diseases tend to impact people with, who are more vulnerable with immune systems that are not strong. And so it tends to impact the young, the very old, and then those with chronic conditions. So far, what we have seen with COVID-19 is that definitely the older population over 65 and those with chronic conditions like diabetes, hypertension are being impacted. Those are the ones that are ending up in our hospitals and those are the ones that are dying. When you look at the 66 deaths that we have in Sacramento, over 90% of those are in people over the age of 65 and the others are in people who had chronic conditions. So definitely, we know that it seems that, at least for now, that it seems like the disease is mild in children. But we're still learning more about COVID-19. One of the things that we learned later is that even for children who initially have mild disease, they can have complications. There's a disease syndrome that we call Kawasaki syndrome, which is basically the immune system just going crazy and haywire and just attacking the body. And it can end up with multi-organ failure for a child who has COVID-19. Those instances are rare, but we know that they can occur. The other thing that we have to be careful, careful about, that we need to think about as we're thinking about children is that, one, they live in a community where they're going back to a family and many of our families are multi-generational. The other is that our staff and our teachers are also in these environments. And they are, many of them are actually in the high-risk categories. So as we're making these decisions, it's not just the children. It's also looking at the entire community that these children are in and how that will be impacted. I know that oftentimes people have said, just let it go through and let, you know, herd immunity. But from what we've seen, if you just let go of all of the measures that we're trying to implement to stop the spread, it can end up being very costly. I've talked to families where the entire family was admitted to the hospital and one parent died. I've talked to cases where husband and wife were in the hospital, the wife died and the husband is sent home with oxygen and has to figure out how to live the rest of his life without the person that was close to him. So it's, it's in the, this context that we need to think about things and I'm saying all this to say that I, I am, my request to you is that you seriously consider making sure that to the best ability that you can, that you implement the measures that we have put. And as you've mentioned, many of them are actually put in as guidelines. But the ones that are mandates that we want you to really look at is the six feet separation, the face covering, the hand washing and having people stay home when they're sick. I know it's a roundabout answer to your question, but I hope I've answered any other questions that you had pertaining to that.
Thank you, doctor. So you addressed then the impact to the different demographic groups. You addressed that there is still an open question regarding the transmissibility in at least the student-to-student population. It sounds like there's still an open question with transmissibility rates from children to adults. If you have any metric to provide us would be helpful regarding that transmissibility rate. It can be whatever you like, mild, moderate to severe, 1 to 10 scale. You can give us the R not metric with context, that would be fine. And if, in the event that you, you don't have specific reliable information as yet, because we've seen over these past few months that the information has changed. Nobody's fault. It's just, it's just as more data is collected, information is transmitted and becomes useful and conclusions are made. But in the absence of specific information for our district, our, our district will be treated like anybody else on a statewide mandate and on a county level mandate. That is what I'm hearing. There is no specific or tailored protocols yet for schools such as ours, particularly ours with Galt being rather distinctly independent and with a K-8 district as our students. Would those be, would those distinct factors be taken into consideration before a mandate is laid upon our district? One, Galt is relatively distinct and two, will our students and our district employees be mandated to wear masks in the on-campus education milieu?
So all very good questions. I cannot give you any data at this point. I will go back and search and see, but as I mentioned, we don't have a lot of information pertaining to children. Most of the information that we have is with adults and we're still learning more about this. But in terms of some of the mandates, there is no distinction and part of the reason for that is, yes, we know that in the more rural areas, at least up until now, the, the, the case count has been lower. But we also know how quickly that can change. For example, some of the small, the counties that are close to Sacramento, for the longest time, they had almost no cases at all, but now they're beginning to see cases pop up. And they have even fewer resources available to take care of them. Example, when you look at Sacramento County, yes, it's, when you look at like the city, yes, most of the cases are within the city region, but we also have several hospitals that are very capable of being able to take care of these very sick people. But when you look at the more rural areas, yes, it, it seems like naturally there's more actually social distancing, which is good. But we also want to make sure that we protect them because if we don't, if we do have a large outbreak in that area, it can be even more difficult to manage because of the difficulty with and the limited resources in those regions. So it's, yes, we do put a lot of focus on the, the areas that are more urban. But I, I think that we cannot be relaxed when it comes to, when it comes to the rural regions as well, because we want to be careful. We want to protect them.
Thank you, doctor. One last question. Again, it's about the masks. That seems to be with the governor's recent order mandating masks in most situations statewide, I believe the age groups included goes down as far as to two. So ages three years and up, wear a mask. I, you know, there's, there has there of consideration given to a school setting with younger students, especially K-23s, for example, but certainly onwards above that to mask compliance because in the school setting mechanically, in the way that that's going to be coordinated, enforced, will be by teachers who are going to have their hands full with this new teaching environment at all different stages. So can you address that and how, you know, in practice, it will be expected for young students to wear masks consistently?
So that's something that we have posed to the state and they are updating the guidelines that they have for schools. Because everybody acknowledges that for younger children, it's very difficult for them to keep a mask on, to wear it appropriately. And then there are also, of course, concerns is that if they're wearing it for the whole day, would there be other issues that could arise from that? When we worked with SCOE to come up with the guidelines, we put in a statement stating that for younger children, it's very difficult. So we would not actually expect the younger children to be wearing the face coverings. But again, it would be more important then to make sure that you do all the other things, the keeping them separate. Or, or the other thing that I did not mention is also the cohorting where you keep certain groups together. Because if you have these stable groups, if there is a case that is diagnosed in that group, at least it limits the impact on the entire school. So we wouldn't have the situation where we have to come in and close the school every 14 days because at least if we know that it's limited within a group, we can just have that group go on the 14-day quarantine. So it would be very important to be able to have those measures in place because we know that we cannot reliably expect the young children to be able to keep the face covering on and use it appropriately the whole day. So we're still waiting to see what changes the, the state will put with that caveat. But right now, what we have told the school districts is they can continue to use the language that we have in the guidance that SCOE put out.
Thank you, Dr. Kassiri. I appreciate your time that you have made available to us tonight.
Thank you.
I have a question, and this is something that's kind of kept me up at night. And I need, I guess I want to know why it's being put on the school districts to do the recommendations. Because I'm only one of five board members. I'm not an infectious disease expert and it's one of those, it's very hard to, to know what's right and what's going to work and what's not going to work and are you making the right decision and and I guess for me, and I'm again, one of five, I feel, I would feel more comfortable if somebody were to just come in and say, this is how schools are going to be. You know, as far as the experts. So I understand there's guidelines and the mask restrictions and recommendations and some who are masked, some can't. Social distancing, 100% understand. But you know, with classes and social, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought here, but you know, the distance learning and in-class sessions. You know, at least for me, I'm confused. I know our parents and our community is confused and it's not just us, it's across the state.
Yeah.
So how come you, no one's coming in and saying, this is what you need to do and putting it on the districts?
And so we, we did do that to a certain extent in that we, we gave guidance that, oh, considerations that school districts can look at. And that gives you at least something to, to, a, a place to start. The reason that we, we did not come in and say, okay, these are the only options that you have or this is the only thing that you can do and you shall be mandated is that every school district is different. And so you're the ones who know the needs of your community and also the resources that you have. And you can then look at that, look at the guidance that we have given and be able to make some decisions about, okay, this seems to be a good way to go. You also have the advantage that you have several school districts and I know that many of them have been sharing information back and forth about, okay, this is what we did and it seems to be working fine. And we've tried to make ourselves in public health also available in reviewing the protocols. Not every county is doing this, but we felt strongly that this was important to show that we want to help you, we want to partner with you and we want to help you with making the decisions. So that exactly what you said, that you're not staying awake at night wondering, did I make the right decision? At least you have, you know, somebody else who looked at it and said, you know, this makes sense. Let's go with it. Um, one of the other questions that we've been asked a lot is what if we decide, like, what, what if a school decides to ignore everything we've given them and they say, okay, we're just going to have the kids come back and we'll just go back to business as usual, pre-COVID. The problem with that is one, the community we live in, and again, with the fact that we still have COVID-19 in the community, is that the chances of transmission in that kind of setting are much higher. And so what's going to happen when you have children falling sick? One is that then we end up having to come in and have to let you know that, okay, the school needs to close, which kind of defeats the purpose because now you're back to staying at home, you know? The, the, and of course, there's that disruption to the children and to the families as well. But the other also that some people have brought up is that unfortunately, in the world that we live in, if there is an unfortunate event, some people will feel hurt, will feel angry and they'll say who is to blame for this? Why did my child end up like this? For example, I've talked about the Kawasaki syndrome. What if a child ended up with that and is ending up on machines for the rest of their life? There'll be questions that will be asked and one of the questions is, wait, did the school do everything that there was, the, they could have done to protect my child? And that's when they'll start pulling out all of the guidelines. Okay, what did public health say? What did the health officer say? Why didn't you follow it and that kind of stuff? So again, as public health, we're coming in to help you. We're not coming in with a stick. We're not coming in to blame you. We know that all of you are working really hard and you know the importance of school and so we want to be able to help you. But we also know that this disease can be very unforgiving. And so we want to go with what we know works. And so why, that's why we're giving you these principles. These are the things we feel that you need to look at, that you need to consider in order to make sure that you make the environment as safe as possible. But again, going back to what you said, I've reviewed a lot of protocols. But I think that it's important because I want to be able to give you that additional support to say, yes, public health reviewed it and we feel more comfortable moving forward with this plan.
No, thank you so much for that answer. And you know, we are a district that strives in personalized learning. And we know that, you know, opening back up with our options that we've opened up to our families and our parents, you know, is also very personalized, but there is just so much to think about. So I'm glad that we do have the support and the guidance. So I'm glad that we do have the support and the guidance. So we, I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much.
I had another question, and that is, I don't know if I saw it in the guidance, if we have a situation where we identify a student or a teacher in a classroom that has COVID and we quarantine essentially all the occupants in that classroom. Does that set up, set off a chain reaction to where we would also quarantine the brother or the sister of the students? In the other, whether they're in a different class, different grade, different school? Has there been any guidance in terms of what would happen if, you know? And how would we move forward with, you know, with quarantining and who else should be notified and also quarantined?
Right. And that's a very good question you bring up. So what would happen if there is a child or a teacher or staff person with COVID-19? One thing that we're asking, and I think the schools are very good at that already, is keeping track of who was in school, on which days, and also keeping track of the activities, which classrooms were they in? And also, as I mentioned, if you can look at the cohorting as well, because if you're keeping them in a stable group, then that limits the number of people who would be exposed if there was an exposure. And to answer your question directly, yes, we would look at that classroom. And if we deem that the entire classroom does need to be quarantined, yes, we would do that. But the reason we're doing it for that classroom is because we have reason to believe that they were directly exposed to the person who was positive. The brothers and sisters of the classmates, say if it's a child, because they are in another classroom. They did not come into contact with the person who was positive. They do not need to be quarantined because they did not have direct exposure. Because the way that COVID-19 is passed on is you have to have be directly and close to the person, close enough that when they speak, when they talk, when they cough, that the virus, when it's released in the air, can actually come to the other people in the room. So we would look at the people in the room, the people that that person was around. But the siblings would not, the siblings of the the child who is positive, yes, those would have to be quarantined because they came into direct contact. But the siblings of the classmates would not.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions from our board members for our special guest? Hello?
Okay. Well, thank you again for having me. And as I mentioned, I am available. And if any other questions come up, you can email me. And definitely I'm available to be able to review your protocols once you're done with the decision making.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. And I mean, you gave me some insight just in your discussion with the other members and your overview of things that I didn't even know about or think about. So I appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Kasiri. All right, Board President Malsen. Do we continue with the report?
Um, yes. Really quick, does the board want to say anything? And let's just let Karen continue or superintendent continue with the report.
Okay, all right. Many, again, we are, as I said, working as swiftly as we can. And again, Dr. Kasiri is just only one example of of just people outside of our district that, you know, we're conferring with to to move forward. Because there are a number of elements that we are needing to consider to plan safely and efficiently. And our Director of Curriculum is going to review with you these areas that are work that we are working on.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Kawhi. So if we go to the next slide, the the point that we want to make tonight is that we want you to know that we are looking at multiple resources as we plan. We're looking at the California Department of Public Health, as you heard from Dr. Kasiri. We have looked at resources from the California Department of Education. We look at their guide, the Sacramento County Office of Education Guide that you know that four of us were involved with creating that document. And then the California Board Association Report. So these are just four resources that we wanted to highlight tonight. But just know that we're looking at resources from different counties, from different states, just to see what they're doing and what they're considering as they plan to reopen the school. If we go to the next slide, Kawhi. We wanted to share with you that we have four goals that are guiding our work. These are the first two. So the first one is to open schools in a safe, and I'll repeat that again, in a safe and caring manner, while following health and safety guidelines provided by the County of Sacramento, the State of California. Goal number two is to offer educational options for students and for parents. This is based on the feedback that we received from the initial survey in which parents indicated that they wanted choices. If we go to the next slide. Goal number three is to provide high quality learning, and I apologize, I should say, teaching and learning that is adaptable to unforeseen change. You've heard us talk about equity equals inclusion plus access, not an afterthought. And then the fourth goal is to provide staff time for planning and professional growth. Again, this goal was based on the feedback that we received during that initial survey in which teachers and qualified staff indicated that they really needed additional time for planning because everything is still so new to to most of us. If we go to the next slide. These are the planning components that we are looking at. So these are the the five. We're looking at instruction with mission control. We're looking at safety and health protocols. We're looking at facilities and operations, communication, and we're looking at policy. If we go to the next slide, Kawhi, this should give you an idea of of what it's going to take for us to be ready to open up in August. Again, at the very top, you will see the components that I just mentioned. And under each component, there are four areas or categories that we need to develop, that we need to create procedures for, that we need to research. So again, just wanted to highlight that if we're not giving you answers, if we if we're only giving you partial answers at this time, that's because this plan is really, it's going to take a little while to put together. We're moving as fast as we can. But with this slide, we again, wanted to highlight there are so many components that have to be taken into consideration before we can open the doors to the staff and and to the children. Before I move on to the next slides, are there any questions? Okay, if we go to the next slide, Kawhi. So here's a learning map. We tried our best to make it as visually simple for the purposes of this presentation. We're looking at different programs. The green is the the brick and mortar, the traditional instructional model that that we have all known. The yellow is a blended model, which would include learning taking at at school in a combination with learning taking place at home. The distance learning is what we just completed, where that's the red program model in which we didn't really have a choice. We were told, you know, we're doing distant distance learning. And we did our best to to create a model for that and to finish the the year on a positive note. The homeschool program is something that is being developed. Again, this is based on the feedback that we received from parents. We have many parents that are worried, concerned that maybe August is not the right time for their child to return to school. So we are doing our best right now to develop a plan for parents who who wish to have that option. Something important to highlight here is that we are start, we're, we want to be in the green, but we're planning for the yellow, the blended program. And we need to have the ability to pivot between programs, or in this case, between colors within 24 hours. The reason for that is what Dr. Kasiri just shared with us. In the event that we have a child that is tested positive, we would prefer to maybe move that class to the red or that gray level, but not necessarily the the whole school or the whole district. I'm trying to think what else I can highlight it with this slide. I think that's pretty much all I can say on that slide. Again, the most important thing is that we are starting with the blended model. We're developing the homeschool program, and we have to have the ability to pivot between different models for different groups, for different cohorts within a period of 24 hours. If we go to the next slide, Kawhi. So if we take a look at the blended model a little bit closer, you already know that the blended model that we are looking at has two sessions or two sections. One component is the direct instruction. The other is the extended learning. Here we're looking at a sample schedule. Five days a week for all children. And we're looking at a start time of eight o'clock and end time of one o'clock with extended learning either taking place at the school or the extended learning taking place at home. Those are just samples of what those section times could look like. For example, if the direct instruction for my child is happening from eight to 10:15, I can opt as a parent to leave my child at school for that extended learning from 10:45 to one, or I can choose to do the extended learning at home. Something that Dr. Kasiri talked to us about, that we are are really thinking and thinking hard about how do we do this, is that we want children to move in cohorts. So we want children to stay either within the same class or the same gray level, again, for the purposes of, in the event that a child was tested positive, we can do the contact tracing. So so the goal here is that whatever schedule we follow, however we move the children within the school, we would like the children to move in cohorts. Something else that I think Lois mentioned earlier today was that the state will ask us to somehow account for the number of instructional minutes and attendance. So we need to account for the learning during the extended learning period. And we need to somehow somehow keep track of the learning between the one o'clock and the 2:30, which would have been a regular school day. So approximately for three hours a day, we're going to have to have some kind of accountability. That learning is taking place, that standards are being addressed. One learning system that we think could really be beneficial in this case would be Guru. Guru has the ability to to keep track of how many minutes, how many standards, how many lessons that the child is learning by day. We can look at a gray level and identify how much learning has taken place within the gray level, within the class, within each school. So so again, thinking about that high level of accountability that the state will require us to have, we're thinking that Guru could be a system that we need to research a little further and more deeply. If we go to the next and last slide, Kawhi. We want you to know that the plan that we are developing has to be considered a living document. And as such, we will update as new information is learned. So nothing in the document will be final, because as Dr. Kasiri already mentioned, we are learning information every day. So we will have to adapt, adapt quickly, because right now, the only constant that we know is change. So with that, I know it's probably not enough information to answer all the questions that you have. But we just wanted to highlight that we are working on on a plan that has so many components and there's so much to consider with limited information and with information that appears to change on a daily basis, that that it's really, it's really hard to plan for a moving target. So with that, Karen, anything else you would like me to add or any questions from the board?
I would like to, if this would be possible, is just review the outline for next steps at this point and then turn it back to our board president in terms of if the board would like to provide some feedback or direction or have questions, if that if that would work.
I don't have any questions. Just my only comment is just to thank you all involved in this process. Because you're right, it is a living document. Mandates are changing almost daily at the county and state levels. And it's really hard to have all the answers. And I feel more comfortable at looking at what you just, you know, just looking at that presentation just now and knowing that as soon as you have the answers, they will be, you know, out to our parents and our families and the community. And I just appreciate all your hard work. I know it's not easy because there are so many moving components right now. Does anyone have any other comments before Karen goes on to next steps? On the work?
I'll call it. Well, just, yeah. Well, first of all, excellent work. You know, I spent a lot of time in my career looking at plans and you know, like, like Gracie said, no plan is perfect. But this really gives us a really good idea of of how things could possibly work. The flexibility, I think, is really important. That ability to transition within 24 hours is huge. I mean, obviously, we have to be that flexible. Actually, Karen used a term before that when we were talking, and she said nimble. And I think nimble is a more accurate description of how we're going to have to be, because you just don't know how quickly things will turn around. One thing that you mentioned Guru, I would, in the future, if you have an opportunity to kind of demonstrate that for us so that we have kind of an idea what it looks like, but you know, the importance of actually being able to track those those productive minutes, I think is is going to be huge as we as we move back and forth and that transition, since it needs to be seamless. You know, then we need to look at a learning management system that's going to allow us to move back and forth between the in-class instruction and online instruction. Some seem to do it better than others. So, yeah, different examples of things like Guru and Canvas and, you know, Google Classroom, you know, for for future presentations, if we had the opportunity to kind of look at those different ones. And I'm sure you guys are already looking at them, but I think that would be helpful in terms of understanding what what looks like it might work. But thank you again. Excellent, excellent planning.
Thank you.
Very good.
I know there's, you know, I had a couple of things. I think it's maybe I'm jumping the gun a little bit. But obviously, just as we go on, you know, setting up some some timelines so that people are clear in terms of what kind of the expectations are from, you know, having clarity of what a hybrid model would look like and to what degree it's feasible. There was, I think Donna did a presentation earlier on the survey that there were 107 that were interested in a hybrid model, which to me seems to be rather low compared to, you know, at home. And so, you know, I'm kind of curious logistically, how would that work? For example, would you have a a teacher with 30 kids and maybe, you know, 10 of them are going through a hybrid? Or would we talk about a whole Stand alone, you know, class. You know, and I think, you know, parents would. Like to have some kind of understanding and clarity about what exactly does this. Look like. So they can make an informed decision. As well as just, you know, other timelines so that parents know when. They need to to commit and. And really have a clearer understanding and as clear as we can get it. About what the school year may look like or what the options. May look like and the same goes, you know, obviously for for our educators, so. Those are some of my preliminary comments, but I really should have waited until to hear from you superintendent. When you're going to share the next steps.
Okay, all right, let me go ahead and I'll go to next steps. That continue to evolve, but I just identified maybe some key ones. And Qui, if you could go ahead and pull that out the agenda. Perfect. Okay, so I'm looking at item number five. And, you know, here were some things that we're looking at, starting next Monday. Next Monday, we, the survey for education preferences will close. Now, we have been communicating that what we're looking at is like one trimester at a time. And and again, you know, that aspect is Mr. Silva brought up about being nimble, but that aspect of being. I want to say trying to. Look at something that could. Could work for a trimester if that is safely possible, but then. Being nimble enough to adjust if again, we can't go that long. Or again, if a parent commits to something and it can't go for a trimester. You try to work with that family if we can. But anyway, June 29, the preference survey closes. On June 29, we also have a district committee representing different. Say staff members that work with different stakeholders in our school district that will be meeting. To advise and provide feedback on our planning efforts. We will continue with union meetings through the month of July as needed, which includes tomorrow with both unions. At separate times. We will again continue to update the FAQ. I think the goal is that whatever we can get to at least by every Friday is trying to get that updated and out there. Which includes. Another, a next step here in terms of program registration. That we will, you know, for the where we do have enough interest and what can be feasible, then we want to send registration information out. So with more specific information, as Mrs. Whitlock had said, so that we can. You know, finalize, you know, what we'll be doing and make any staffing adjustments that that need to happen, which includes on F. You'll see that we're looking at some temporary positions. That we would post to be able to support. What we're trying to do to support several options safely and efficiently. And then we have another board meeting on on July 22. What Lois Yant announced tonight was that on August 1, the state is going to release a template. That will need to complete and bring to the board for approval, which is called a learning continuity and attendance plan. So when I was speaking to our director curriculum about that, knowing that we don't know what the elements are. We do think that based on, you know, reading the guidance documents, the areas that she outlined. We think that, you know, what we have in process that we hopefully can just cut and paste and stick into that template, you know. As needed, which we do think, you know, again, so so while we are working on local planning efforts without a state template. You know, I think we'll be prepared to to make that timeline timeline work. Now, what may be coming to the board on July 22? You know, again, we will continue to update you and others, but maybe what is coming to the board on July 22 would be. An action plan and things that are more. You know, perhaps not the whole matrix that Cleo del Toro Agüino had shared with you, but perhaps action plans along with some of the areas. Maybe not all of it, because not all of it may be necessary or far enough along. But that that is our plan of just some of the key next steps at this time. And Qui, if you could go ahead and move away from this and back to our board. And I want to turn it back to our board president on just. Direction and next steps or questions.
Well, I have a question. Are we, when everything gets nailed down as far as a reopening plan, are we going to take action on that? Because my concern is if we're looking to open August 13. We have our July board meeting and that's it. Before we open, so I guess what's the plan? For that?
Well, again, I think. You you know what, I mean, it's like, what what do you know right now? We are looking at at three options. And if the board, you know, this is a question I would have is like, would the board want to do a study session? Or have a special meeting in July? To. You know, kind of take a look at where we are with some things to prepare for action. At the July 22 meeting regarding making the program options work, the plans around those.
I think it would be good to have a deeper dive in what the school day looks like. From the 8:30 to 1:00 and what would be. Academically. You know, cut out or how, you know, how that would be. That enrichment would happen somewhere else as well as. You know, what does a hybrid, what, you know, what the expectations been look like? As well as, you know, do we have a. Protocols or. Plans in terms of addressing and understanding. The needs of keeping classrooms clean and 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 how do we, you know, what are the protocols if. If a student or teacher, you know, is has COVID-19 and how. How, you know, how are we going to to respond to that? It's kind of out there in a. Study session. So it's public information.
Because we we could set up that meeting and I I just want to say also that. What Dr. Kassiri shared tonight in terms of. Areas that we're working on that we could send to her office to take a look at, I think, is really going to help us. Help us more confidently bring, you know, get to some decisions about and even again, elements that we need to work on that don't necessarily involve board action. But, you know, would would help us work safely. You know, as much as possible. I again, I do, I think Dr. Kassiri may maybe still listening, but I just, I really appreciated what she shared on that tonight. That that just. Is very comforting for me as a superintendent to to know that we, because again, she has been in her office. They have been very accessible since we began this journey when it started for us. With, you know, a substitute employee that, you know, was quarantine at the time, so. So then maybe again, a next step. Would be to work to set up a date for a special meeting with the board. So that would help us then bring for action. You know, the key areas that would need to be needed at that July 22 meeting. And at the same time. You know, we will work to keep our our stakeholders updated through an FAQ in both English and Spanish. And work on an action plan that we can also share on the FAQ so that. Our our community knows kind of what we're working on and what they can expect when. Knowing that it is a plan and plans change, but again, so they know, you know, that we are attending. You know, has the best we can to reopen safely and with the highest quality that's that's possible. And then I, again, so does that? Does that seem, turning it back to our board, does that work in terms of our next steps here? In this incredible time?
Yeah, you know, the only comment that I would say is, and I understand that plans change, but. I think at some point we have to come to a point. That this is what it's going to look like for this trimester. And it's very clear, as clear as we can get it for parents before they commit. Because the one thing I think that that a lot of parents. Would be concerned about is is that they're not getting the the full picture. And so it really haven't that. Dialed down and in some degree, really understanding from parents, what is it that you need? For us to share for you to make, you know, an informed decision, because. The one thing that we really don't want to see is a lot of. Transition within a semester to say that this isn't working for me and my child, so. I want to do distance learning or this isn't working for me and my child. Needs to be in the classroom, so as much information that. As solid as we could make it. And making sure that we can get really solid commitments from families and students. You know, beforehand, I can't impress upon that enough.
I have a question because I think. Just maybe to correct, because there might be some misunderstanding or complete understanding, because John, I have a good point. So if parents choose, you know, whichever option, one of the three options going into the school year, they're committed for that trimester. Now, should that not work out? For their child, are they allowed to change that going into the second trimester? So say they were doing distance learning, it didn't work out first trimester, they're committed, but they want to transition back into the school or a or a blended model. Second trimester, are they able to do that? I I've heard this question out in the community.
That was part of the strategy of of what we were. What we were wanting to do. So because again, is when our director curriculum was sharing the. The matrix, what we call it, the continuum. You know, of of how we knew things in February, you know, let's say the normal February. And kind of where we are right now. If if we can just again, get that plan going for that first trimester. And then again, maybe we're able then to go back to normal after that. I mean, that would be one way that it could play out. We just were not comfortable just saying, you know, locked in, you're locked in for the whole year because there's also this element. Where we may have to turn it around and go back to where we. Where we're full-time distance learning if if health conditions warrant that. And try to do that in 24 hours. I mean, that, you know. Our director curriculum set the standard on that. That's the goal, 24-hour turnaround. And so that's the nimbleness, but again, trying to stay as constant as we can. We really do want to come through. You know, in more than one way to meet the needs of what our families think will serve them best. In a feasible way. And I I understand the need for more clarity. We're giving it all that we have and I again, board members, I know that, you know, you need to. You know, just give us that direction in terms of what you think will help so that we. Because again, we we need to be work in partnership with our families. We want their confidence. You know, we want to come through. We want to come through and we're doing the best we can and want to do better if we can.
Well, I agree with them and thank you for putting that up. I agree that a special board meeting. In the next few weeks, the five of us can delve deeper. And I think it would help and that, you know, who knows, because then you guys will be farther along as well in your planning.
Okay, and we'll. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry I interrupted you, Gracie.
Oh, no, I was done. I was opening that to the other board members to see if they agree and feel we need to go deeper into this. In the next few weeks.
Most definitely, I.
No, no, you are.
You know. It goes, it goes without saying, you can just kind of see that you. The leadership is working really, really hard. On this and I, you know, I could speak for many of us that we really appreciate. Really appreciate the the efforts and some of the school districts that I've come across. Statewide, it really, this really brought. Superintendents and board members to to the brink. So, you know, I really appreciate the work that's that's being done. You know, we don't. You don't really have the answers. No one really has the answers and so. You know, again, we, I really appreciate. Everything that the effort that that is going on and. I had a point, but I lost it. Anyways, yeah, a deeper dive would would definitely be. Would definitely be helpful.
We will work to, we will work with you to set that up. And again, we want to be able to to do it in such a way that we don't lose the window of registration also. So that we can, you know, make decisions about staffing, just all that. So we will, we will strategize and and work with you this week to get that nailed down to be able to communicate that. Board President Malsen. I say that we're at around 9:30 right now and. Your thoughts here on on public comment?
I would say if there's no further discussion from the board, any more comments, then we can move on to public comment.
Just one, I remember what I was going to say is just, you know, looking at this from the lens, from the lens of equity. I know that was one thing we haven't really. Talked about it at length, but you know, somewhere down the line, that would be. Something that, you know, I think many are interested in and with that I'll. Shut it up. Thank you.
Very good. All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, you know, for. Again, again, recognizing our staff that worked that again, presented to the doctor Kassiri along with those who supported us. That we could bring this information forward to you tonight. So what we'll do now is I'm going to move to public comment. And just review of a few things with our audience here. Is that public comment will be limited to no longer than three minutes. And again, what I will do is when I see that you're getting close to three minutes, I'll try to give you a signal at around two minutes and 30 seconds. And then ask you to conclude at three minutes so that we can. You know, hear as much public comment as we can tonight. We'll see what we have. We'll see whether we need to. You know, end it at a certain time. We'll just see how this goes. Again, the the public comment is not a question and answer. It's not where staff or the board engages with those that are making public comment. It is an opportunity for us, for our board and and staff to hear. To hear your comments. So we'll start with. Those that have have participated tonight by teleconference. If you are participating by teleconference and you would like to make public comment on the reopening of schools. If you would please type into the chat box now. If you would type your name. And the agenda item. Again, please do not type in questions. If you have questions, you can please email me. But again, if you would like to make public comment by teleconference, please type in your name. And again, the topic will be school, schools reopening. And then I'm just waiting here a bit longer and then I'm going to ask. Quiet Bach, our assistant for tonight or other staff that are assisting her. And if you could please let us know if there is any public comment by teleconference around the reopening of schools.
Yes, Dr. Shar, we have one comment request from Martha Vilma. Regarding instructional assistant role once schools reopen.
Okay, so let's let's hold it at that right there for just for, I'm going to ask one more. We're going to go to phone so we can see what we have there. Okay, so let's, let's hold it at that right there, just for, I'm going to ask one more, we're going to go to phone, so we can see what we have there next. If you have, are participating tonight by phone. And you would like to make public comment of up to three minutes about schools reopening. If you would please unmute your phone and state your name so that we can record it and then we'll let you know. When it is your turn to provide public comment. Okay, all right, Qui, I'm going to go back to you again, would you. Or board president Molson here, I know that we do have then one public comment by teleconference. Would one of you please go ahead and facilitate that please, and I'll start my timer.
Okay, and this was Martha, correct?
Yes, yes, right, there you go.
If you like to unmute and you have three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, it's actually really short and I'm sure that you guys would be addressing it once you guys meet again. But just so far, I haven't really seen anything specific to say. What the IA role will be. In these different situations, this last time with the. Distance learning, everything was really up in the air and I understand it was very, you know, quick transition over. Some of us ended up working, some of us didn't. So with the reopening, I think more so with the, if the campus were to be open and. We're talking about kids staying in the one classroom, not going, sounds like maybe not going to reading groups as we were used to. If, once you guys do these recommendations, guidelines. And put them out there again to staff and parents, if that can really be clarified and included in there so that. We and the parents know where the IAs will be stationed in the classroom and this scenario, or. Will we be, will we still be running some kind of like win groups where the, the kids transition in big groups. Versus, you know, a bunch of little rotating groups. So I just asked that maybe that be put in there a little more clearly. So that we know what the role is in each scenario. What the IAs would be doing in the classrooms. With each different scenario. That's it.
Thank you. So do we have any other public comments?
No, we do not at this time.
So do we have any public comments for topics that are not on the agenda?
I'm sorry, we do have another public comment request from Sarah Murray regarding reopening of schools.
Sarah, if you'd like to unmute.
Can you guys hear me? Can you guys?
Yes, they can hear you, Sarah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Hi, this is Sarah Murray, teacher at Valley Oaks, not River Oaks, like I said last time, I'm sorry. And I just have a couple of things that I hope. Can be considered or well thought out as you guys plan and meet together. As a parent, I'm still concerned about the 1 o'clock and later time. I know some said, you know, kids can go home or. There might be like aces or champions or something available. With that being said, if there is some type of childcare or program available. I still don't see the ultimate purpose. Of kids being limited to 13 to 15 in the class for a few hours a day, but then spreading out. Into multiple children of the school for a program. That's from 1 o'clock on. I would rather have more time with my kids and keep them till 3:00, etc. As a teacher, I am still confused. As to what we would be doing if we have two different sets of children of our kids. And then on top of it, distance learning. So it sounds like from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, teachers have to eat lunch, do their prep and do distance learning stuff on the computer. Every single day, if I'm understanding that correctly. So maybe just also think about. The challenges for a teacher and a teacher's position. A lot of it is talk about parents and what parents want and need, but it's. It's still very hard for a teacher, as a teacher perspective, how this is going to look. Again, if we went from 8:00 to 3:00, I would rather have half my class for three, three and a half hours and the other half. Or something of that nature and keep them all together where I can teach them, but that's just my opinion. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Sarah. And Qui, is there any other public comment?
No, there's no other public comments. I do have questions that are surrounded by the theme of. Program registration. And in the board taking action later in July. How, how do they know the program they're registering for is going to be offered if the board's taking action later in July?
So what I will do is I will address that in an FAQ. In terms of just what, in terms of the next steps that we talked about today.
Thank you. So if there. Didn't expect public comment to, maybe too. So there's no more public comment on topics for not on the agenda. Qui, you did say there were some questions, but can most of those be addressed in an FAQ?
Yes, they can.
All right, perfect. I think that'd be the best route to go, especially being mindful of time. This has been a very productive night, I think. A lot was jam-packed in, we had a great guest speaker that brought a lot of insight. And knowledge, I think, and understanding. At least to myself, can't speak for everyone else. Any final thoughts for the good of the order on this from our board?
I'm just wondering, is there, is there an opportunity? For a teacher working group in terms of fleshing out some of the, you know, the various issues that may come with. What instruction, you know, could look like as well as. I'm in my classroom and desks are rearranged in ways that are unimaginable, or maybe. From a instructor's perspective, not teachable anymore because, because different things are maybe obstructed. Just to kind of. You know, kind of hear from, from them and I'm sure. You know, you're obviously having lots of conversation with lots of different groups of, of people, I just maybe. Maybe some of our teachers are not aware that there's an opportunity to participate.
Yeah, I, again, I, I know that this has not been launched yet, and I think that our plan is to launch this next Monday. Is, is that there are going to be some opportunities that will involve teachers to, that do get at instruction. Some opportunities where there'll be representation from every school. And our director curriculum is working to set that up. And again, what, I think what will help us, I do, I do know this, I know that there was another, another survey that was done with teachers. Through our teachers' union that we'll be hearing more about tomorrow. But I was thinking that that information. Claudia del Toro Agüiano, I'm thinking that some of that may help further refine what those groups may be doing. Aside from the curriculum, but some of these things that Mr. Gordon brought forward as well. That again, that's what's coming to mind, and again, we're not launching that until Monday. But again, that will be communicated with all teachers across the district to see where the interest is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good question, John, thank you. Anything else from the board? No? Okay, well, if there's no more public comment, no more discussion, then. Yes, we are adjourned.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your work and dedication on what we're doing moving forward.
Thank you.
Good night, good night, everyone.